To the August 22 Troy City Council meeting, we are pleased this evening to have with us Reverend Norm Rocki from the Saint Elizabeth and Satan Church to give our invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Father Norm.
Dear brothers and sisters, let us take a moment to silence our minds and our hearts. Lord God, all that is good finds its source in your infinite goodness. You have created us in your image and endowed us with the ability to know and serve you. We invoke your spirit upon these men and women who lead our local government, and we humbly ask that you give them with the qualities that make them good and faithful servants of the people you have entrusted to them. As they give leadership to the citizens of Troy, give them your innocent, your benefit and insights for the wisdom of all. In all of their deliberations, may they work to bring about what is truly just, uphold the dignity of the human person, and in matters of difficulty bless them with the insight that characterize Solomon's dependence on your wisdom. And give them your assistance in every way to serve the people of Troy. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Will we have the roll call, Mrs. Stewart?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Horleak?
Here.
Mayor Proton Kirwin?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Slater?
Here.
Corn present. This evening, we have no certificates of recognition or special presentations or carryover items, and neither do we have any public hearings. So our first item of business will be public comment, and I will call on people according to when they signed up here. And let me remind folks in the audience that this is on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda, and that the time limit is five minutes per person, and we'll have our clock going. So first I'll call on Mr. Peters. Mr. Peters, you were the first person to sign up. Would you come forward? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and folks at Troy. First, I want to give thanks to the Council in general for the way they conducted themselves over this library campaign. I know you all took a lot of hits, and I think you're commended for your patience and endurance. I also want to thank Congress for saving the default, and it would be my hope that the debt commission would work in an expeditious way in lieu of the gas tax expiration to come up with a solution to the debt crisis that would be both fair and balanced. I want to talk about the parks for a minute. I know that I was over there tonight, and they got like a fall softball league, and at least it looks like there's a softball league. But I think that they could organize, you know, maybe a women's fast and slow ball pitch league for over in the parks. And I also think that you could organize a cricket league, because I see a lot of Indian and Eastern Nationals there. And I know they play like on Sunday and Saturday and stuff, but I think that if they, you know, could organize a league or something like that, that maybe there would be interest for that as well. Let me see. There was some, I was talking to a friend of mine, and he was talking about bringing back Fakir Fest. And also, the response I got from the people in general was that there was not enough police presence, particularly late at night, from about 9:30 to 10 o'clock when the park closes. And it's not that, it would have to be like all, but that's the continual thing that I kept getting, that on particular times, sometimes it'd be there, and sometimes it wouldn't be there. So that's the word I was getting from them. And I guess that's just about it. One other thing, I would hope that the Iranian government would consider the hostages and act of goodwill, and hopefully they'd free them. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Marvin Minehart is our next person that signed up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. And I appreciate that, you know, you do do yourself the best you can, but the reason I don't comment on the agenda, because I already figured, it's already figured out and passed. So that's the reason I work on other projects. The thing I like to bring up is you have people on Facebook that's trying to support the city. S. Martin is causing a lot of hard feelings, calling people liars, using you as an example of you said something, and somebody said something, all of a sudden they're a liar. Now, what I'm trying to say to you is, it's okay for people to talk on the net, but when you start calling people liars and to move out of the city of Troy, you're causing a little bit higher, because I've been called by your policeman about stuff I have said up here. All right? Now, last Friday, all of a sudden, I got kicked off of a Facebook page. I already gave two to each side and one to you, Mayor, because nobody said thank you last week. And next week, if I don't hear nobody thank you, you will always get one, Mayor. All right? Respect to your office. If these other guys can just look through what you are. What that is, is that I got kicked off Friday night off of a Troy Facebook page. Now, that's okay, because I only got so much time in my life to do stuff. So I just work on something else. And that's the reason I start working on my book with you. And that's the reason I'm start showing you those papers. Okay? Because I don't really care what anybody calls me on the Internet, but when they, the one from the Facebook page, they say, I'm off the medication, that is what I call a cheap hit, because as you know, that's settled between you and I. So when they bring that up, they're trying to make me attack you. But this Mark Sharp guy, I figure, you know, I didn't bring it up. He's a fake name, just like that other Marvin Stein guy. I figured there's a same kind, and according to the Internet, fake names could be pedophiles. And your police department says they don't care. So if they don't care, I can work on other projects. So I started up four groups on Lichen with one project in mind, to bring this city to the knees, to teach respect, because Susan Martin out there is causing me personal problems. And when somebody causes me personal problems, I just pass it through, because I do not live on the bottom of the hill. As you know, you was a member of the Glenmore subdivision. You know my dad was in that subdivision. I'm nowhere near the bottom of the hill. So once somebody attacks me, I can go all over the place, other than the city of Troy, to teach Troy respect. Okay? Because there's no reason why Susan Martin has to do that type of stuff. And don't worry, I got more information on her than you now. Okay? Because when somebody makes a personal attack at me, I make a note, as you found out. Nothing wrong with attacking somebody. But when they hide behind your skirt, I take exception to that. And she hides behind your skirt. And so, and I'd like to also thank Evans. I don't know where he works in the place, but I was working on a problem in a parking lot with Mr. Boss Stakes. So somehow, he can have an unsafe parking lot that can be reported. I reported it three different places in this city. No response. I called this Darryl guy, they fixed the next day. So I know things can get fixed in this town, because that would have killed somebody, that particular incident. But Boss Steak, I suppose, gets special treatment in this city. Once again, because I pointed it out directly to a policeman with his own eyes, and he didn't report to fix it. Okay? I guess he was busy eating a donut or something, or he was making an ambush. They sit there in Boss Steak's parking lot, and they ambush people on 16 Mile, which is basically against the law. Okay? And also, for, you know, somebody asked me if I still fish. And I said, yeah, I'm fishing on 16 Mile, because on 16 Mile, some of the biggest fish I've ever seen in my life. You know how much money I'm making off some of those fish on 16 Mile? And also, I'd like to clarify, somebody made a statement that the city council was talking about selling the city hall. And there it is in the paper. Now, all we know is the Protestant religion says if you're not for it, you're against it, and if you're not against it, you're for it. So since the council hasn't said anything against the idea, you must be for the idea. That's what, according to the book, your book says, says that type of stuff. And also, everything I put on the Internet, I take a receipt for. I copy everything I send on the Internet, or anything that mentions my name on the Internet. I also keep a book that marked down everything I do every day. So when somebody attacks me, they better have it together. But you better rein into Susan Martin, because she is bringing hostility to the city. You have a good day.
Next, we're going to hear from Bruce Formingdale. Bruce?
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and fellow citizens. For some time now, I've been concerned about the tone and tenor we use when speaking to our city council members. The public portion, public comment portion of these meetings provides each of us the opportunity to share our ideas with the elected leaders of our city. That needs to be done in a civil manner. We do a disservice to the citizens of Troy when we use this time to demean, attack, or attempt to belittle the very people they elected to represent all of us. The same is true regarding those individuals that we hire or appointed to service. The city council is a deliberative body that needs input from us, the people they represent, to make good citizens, to make good decisions. Attacking them serves no good purpose. Presenting our ideas, concerns, solutions in a calm deliberative manner does serve a good purpose. It enhances the city council's ability to pursue solutions consistent with the needs of the community. As spokesmen, we do our cause harm by attacking the very people we're trying to influence, trying to make them hear and consider our point of view while being attacked. Let's quit wasting our time, and the council's time, with name-calling and nonsense. No one, no one hears well, hears what you're saying, if they feel they're being attacked. Think about that. Are you able to absorb ideas or remove information when it's being delivered in a hostile or negative fashion? I know I can't. I'm too busy preparing to do rebuttal or defense of my own idea or position. No one appreciates being criticized in public. Good leaders praise in public and do their criticizing in private. So direct your criticism to the city council in writing. That's the equivalent of being in private. As spokesmen, we need to be solution-oriented in these meetings. As I remember, what our mothers taught us. If you can't say something nice about a person, then don't say anything at all. Let's share our ideas, thinking, and solutions with each other in a positive way, listening with both our ears and our heart, in a spirit of cooperation. So for those of you who know your Bible, remember what Jesus Christ said. Blessed are the peace makers, for they will be called sons of God. That's Matthew, Chapter 5, verse 9. And on that note, I would like to thank Mayor Schilling, Mary Kirwin, and Martin Horleak for the years of service that you have donated or contributed to this community. May God richly bless each and every one of you for your contribution to the well-being of the citizens of Troy.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from James Savage. Good evening, Mr. Savage.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Okay, last Sunday's Free Press, that was a week ago yesterday, regional transit system. And it goes on to talk about the Woodward Light Rail, the Smart System, and DDOT System. The Loon Losers, because they don't have any passengers. Pages and pages of information, but no mention of the Troy Transit System. So I have to assume that that's not included, and therefore, you're flogging a dead horse. At one point, I want to add here, in this, the project would take roughly $10 million a year to operate. State transit funds, and on a short-term basis, federal congestion mitigation money could cover some operating costs. So it's not even started, and we're gonna have to pay to keep it up if it ever gets built, which I doubt. Okay, and one of the reasons why it won't work is because the free enterprise system works on a supply and demand basis. And the only demand for mass transit is for the fast train from Ann Arbor to Chicago. That would work. In 1935, we had trains running over 100 miles an hour on a regular daily basis. So what is taking so long? All this talk about transit systems is not about moving passengers or providing service, it's about spending taxpayers' money. We see every day the wasteful inefficiency of the Smart Bus System. But what is not so obvious is a whole new industry of surveys, studies, and consulting to talk about these issues. Over 10 years ago, M.DOT ordered a study to widen ICE-75 through Oakland County. The cost of the study to Michigan taxpayers, $2 million. And this is what we get for $2 million, seven pages, and nothing happened 10 years ago. And they're still talking about the same thing in the Free Press a week ago. So that's all we get. But the waste is not all state and federal. Here are just a few of the wasteful studies paid for by the Troy taxpayers. The ICE-75 long-inking interchange to what is now half-empty buildings. The Future Study started off at $50,000, but it probably ended up at more like $100,000. And five years into it, where are we? Read the Future Study, see if you can make any sense of it, and where it applies six years later in Troy. It was a waste of time and money. The ICMA Study, $100,000. How is the administration doing survey? $46,000. What do the residents want survey? $20,000. $60,000 for the search for city manager. And then you totally ignore the findings. The list goes on and on. The financial leaders of the world, the International Monetary Fund, and the G8 have been meeting for years. What is it, three, four meetings a year sometimes? Or, and it's in fancy hotels, and there's hundreds of them there, and they meet for several days. And look where they are now. The whole world is in a financial mess. So what are they talking about? No one, could no one have questioned what happens when the gravy train runs out of steam? Because it was gonna run out of steam. We all knew that. So what was all the meetings for? If you think talk solves problems, then go ahead. Have meetings and studies every day of the year, but not with my money. Thank you.
Next, we're going to hear from Ed Grasek. Good evening.
Mayor, Council. First, I'd like to bring to the attention of Patriot Week coming up. This is a week-long celebration of the Patriots of the United States, beginning September 11 through the 17. And it's in recognition of the American spirit, or to invigorate the American spirit. September 11 is the first day. You can go online, patriotweek.org. It was founded, like I said, by Circuit Court Judge Michael Warren and his daughter, two years ago, his 10-year-old daughter. And the first, on Sunday, September 11, there's a, it opens at the historic Fort Wayne, Fort Wayne down in the southwest Michigan, southwest Detroit. So it's a week-long celebration, ending on September 17, the day the Constitution was signed. So, yeah, and you can go online, patriotweek.org to get more information. And then, I'm still upset with the raising taxes in the middle of a, in a down, in a down economy. And when I brought it up a couple times in the last couple meetings, I was told that, you know, that costs are gone up in the city, people's, the city's costs are going up, our costs have gone up too. But yet, you still raise taxes. And in a down economy, we shouldn't be raising taxes. And then I also mentioned the government keeps getting bigger, and I was told, well, you guys have downsized. Well, 5% downsized isn't all that much when the rest of us are taking big cuts, more than 50% in some cases, or losing our jobs altogether. Ronald Reagan once said, "No government ever voluntarily reduces itself in size. Government programs, once launched, never disappear. Actually, a government bureau is the nearest thing to eternal life we'll ever see on this earth." And then when I brought up some stuff about, you know, our costs are going up too, I was, I yelled it from the back, I shouldn't have done that. I felt like Joe Wilson when he yelled "liar" to Obama. But our costs have gone up, and now we have to pay extra taxes now for the library. So I'd like to ask for a waiver. I'm trying to get one for my Obamacare too, from, from Mr. Peters. I'm having a hard time with that. But I was wondering if I could get a waiver for my taxes. Maybe I can talk to you later about that. So I don't know what I have to do, but I'll get with you on that. Because our costs are going up, and we have no way to get back that money. So, that's all I have to say. Also, someone brought up ice caps at the last meeting, glaciers receding. I was wondering if that's true. I don't believe it. But if that's true, will you rescind the underground irrigation system restrictions? That's a question for later. Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to hear from Fred Eckout. Fred is here. Good evening, Mr. Eckout.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Management. I attended a city council meeting in July, where Councilman Horleak made a suggestion regarding employee compensation and benefits. And that suggestion was that a comprehensive schedule be put together with a level of pay and benefits before any concessions were granted, and then the concessions, and then the resulting pay and benefit level after the concessions. Councilwoman Beltramini then indicated that she'd like to see something along those lines as well. It's been four to five weeks now. I haven't seen or heard of anything further in that area. It seems to me that that would be an extremely constructive endeavor. There have been a number of people at this podium, a number of residents, with questions in that area. There have been, there's been a lot of discussion amongst the council members themselves, with Councilwoman Kirwin, mentioning at one meeting the pay concessions that the city manager has taken along the way. So this kind of summary, I think, would go a long way towards answering some of these open issues. And I'd like to know if the council will be undertaking that, that effort. And if so, if there's some sort of a timeline that might be attached to the completion of that project. And if you could respond with any information in that area during the response to public comment, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that signed up to speak tonight. So we'll go directly to response to public comment, if there's any from staff or council members at this point.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
There were three issues that I would like to have, or I guess, basically, to staff answer. First was the $10 million operational costs for the transit center. I know that we are still fleshing out figures for that, but certainly, that is not a good number. So if Mr. Zerlag or Mr. Miller could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. I know there's been a grant received for about $10 million of federal monies for the transit center.
That's for construction, though, not operations.
Oh, that's correct. That's the capital cost.
Yeah. The, the statement from Mr. Savage talked about operational costs being in the neighborhood of $10 million. So I know that that's the piece that we have been working on, and that's part of why it was designed as an environmentally engineered building and the like. So if Mr. Moore could contact, comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. All right.
Mayor, members of council, I'm, we are preparing solid estimates for operations of the proposed building, and we will present that to you when the funding agreements come forward in the, for construct, well, actually, for, for final design bidding documents and construction. And that will be coming forward in the short term. I would estimate 30 to 60 days. And my initial, initial findings for operations of the building, and understand the final design is not complete yet, is way less than that, in considerably less, and at this time, I'll say considerably less than $50,000 a year, considerably less. And since we don't have a final design, I don't want to pick an exact number.
I understand. And Mr. Grasek, your taxes can be appealed with the Board of Review. Anybody can do that, any year, anytime. So that's just a point of information. And Mr. Eckout's suggestion on the employee charts, we had a great discussion about that at the last meeting. Mr. Zerlag, would you summarize that discussion, please?
Sure. In fact, I have a letter that was sent to city council relative to study items, and on August 29, and I'm, we're targeting that day for a report that'll be issued that talks about reduced costs as a result of the early retirement incentive program, as well as concessions. So, not to give a long, boring response, but essentially, we're going to be taking a look at three expense lines. You know, the first expense line essentially is what was budgeted. The second expense line- The second expense line is what had to be added back in accordance with the ICMA recommendations for sustainability in public works, and we still have yet to address the police department, where we've slated 38 reduction of sworn personnel and need to put back four. That would be another expense line. And then the third expense line essentially would be that amount that would reduce our expenses as a result of the E-RIP and concessions on those numbers, or on those individuals where the savings were not already baked in. If you recall, when Mr. Lamorato was here, some of those concessions were already baked in the budget, some were not. So we're trying to ferret that out. And by Monday, I'll be working with Mr. Tom Darling and Monica Ireland, as well as our HR Director Peggy Sears, for a combined report on that matter.
And isn't it true that every one of our employees has taken at least 10% in cuts?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Before we call on somebody else, I think my impression of when Mr. Savage was referring to the article, it was on the Detroit Metro Transit, and he said that Troy was not even mentioned in the article. So I think the dollar figure is referred to some other projects and not to a project at all. That was my impression of what Mr. Savage brought up. I can be corrected if I'm not correct on that. Anyone else have anything they want to respond to? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I just had two comments, and one, I think, is a point of clarification. Mr. Reinhardt was discussing a Facebook page, and I just wanted to point it out, that while there are many community Facebook pages that different people have set up and interact on, there isn't a City of Troy Facebook page. So while I understand that no one wants to be insulted, or if he feels that he's been slighted in some way, it isn't something that's governed by the City of Troy, or monitored by the City of Troy in any way. So I think that needed to be clarified, because it wasn't really made clear where he was interacting on the Internet. But the other piece that I also wanted to bring up, and I'm sure we'll probably talk about it later, Mr. Peters touched on police... He was commenting on the fact that he doesn't think there's enough police presence in the park, and later on in the meeting, I'm sure we're going to be talking about the new volunteer program that is going into effect through the police department, and that is going to be a priority. It may look a little bit different, because it's going to become something that community volunteers are going to be engaging in, in terms of going through the necessary training, and then actually being eyes and ears of the police department in places such as our parks. So I think that should be noted as well. It may look a little bit different, but it will hopefully be serving a similar function in terms of being a deterrent, and I think we'll talk a little bit about that later on the agenda, too.
Are you signaling, Mr. Miller?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and I apologize, Councilwoman McGinnis, but the city does have a Facebook page.
Uh huh.
And the police department has one also.
I knew the police department did, but I didn't know that they were interacting like that on our city Facebook page. I thought it was monitored a little bit differently.
I think the point is, though, that when individuals who are not members of council or members of the administration, other individuals make a comment on a page such as that, we have no control over what they say and they don't say. And I think that's the point. Mayor Protam Kirwin?
Madam Mayor, that's true. We can't control factual information on a blog, or civility on a blog. I think it's something that we would desire to be, or if they use the name of elected officials, we can't control that either. But that's unfortunate. I actually just wanted to kind of hit sports, because Mr. Peters mentioned sports. It'd be nice if there were cricket leagues, and there is. There are active cricket leagues in southeast Michigan. They do play in Rochester Hills. The cricket pitch, as we know from years ago in discussions, is quite... Has specific dimensions, and we're not able really to house us here, but they do play in Rochester Hills, and the awards program is held right here at the Troy Community Center. So that's nice to know. If you look in Troy today, we do have a number of sports. You can go ahead and look that up, and softball, and women specifically included in that. Or oftentimes, businesses will hold their own softball on our field. So hopefully, people are able to exercise and enjoy team sports and the use of our parks as well. For more... Earlier, Councilmember McGinnis was mentioning the volunteer program for police, and that's item N2 in this agenda, in case people would like to look that up online or for reference later.
Anybody else? Councilman Pine?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just following up Mr. Eckout's specific request, and I appreciate your response, Mr. Zerlag, to Councilwoman Beltramini's question. But specifically, I think he was asking about a comparison of wages of employees before concessions and after concessions. And you talked about what you were presenting on the 29th, and I appreciate that. Will it include a listing of the wages before and after the concessions on the 29th? I didn't get that.
I'll talk to Peggy Sears. I believe what it's going to address is an aggregate, if you will. Like, you know, here's the aggregate amount of wages that we had before concessions, here's what it is now, here's the impact in the aggregate of the E-RIP program, and this is what was budgeted. This is a reduction from that budgeted amount. You know, the E-RIP's over a five-year time horizon, we have a three-year budget. And I'm not meaning to give a convoluted answer, but it's a convoluted issue. And we're tracking it by department, and absolutely, the first thing we need to come up with essentially is concurrence between, you know, our CPA and folks with master's degrees on the methodology and the numbers that we can present then to the City Council.
Anyone else on response?
Mayor?
Councilman Howelak?
You know, I had mentioned in... Had inquired in July, and I know my two colleagues, two of my left, had also followed up subsequently about receiving total payroll costs, I should say, total personnel costs by individual, for each individual who was employed by the city. Of course, with their name removed and their title included, no name, title only. And that's the issue at hand, and as far as I can gather, it's still unresolved as to whether or not we are going to get that. And it's a... The only thing that complicates it is the fact that, you know, you may want to do it before and after the concessions. The actual total personnel cost by individual is a relatively easy thing to put together, but, you know, that's really the issue at hand. And I would still like to see that, and I'll continually mention that even as a member of the general public after November, because I think it's something that is beneficial to the taxpayers and residents of this city. And, you know, if we're going to promote the fact that all personnel groups have received, or I should say, have accepted payroll reductions, then our residents, I think, deserve to see what the result of that is by position, so that there's no longer any confusion as to what exactly is happening with respect to pay and payroll and personnel costs.
Anybody else on response to public comment? Mayor Protam Kirwin?
Just to follow up, if I may, a question for the manager. I believe when direction was given to you during negotiations, was not the concern of council to get to a 10% bottom line in terms of what the budget looked like? Just get it down 10%. If it comes from medical, if it comes from... Just get it to 10%. Was that your direction?
That was.
Okay. And that's what we were looking for?
Yes.
And did we get there?
Got more than 10%.
Okay, then that's what we really need to look at. I think, again, how many people did you have in the finance department before June?
I think we had nine.
How many do you have right now?
I think I have four.
And any contractual?
I have one contractual, Mr. Darling, who comes in three days a week, and one part-time CPA that comes in three days a week.
And what are they concentrating on right now?
They are concentrating right now on getting out the... Well, I bifurcated their assignments. Tom is more of a policy individual, and... Mr. Darling, I should say. And he's working primarily on getting the audit together, which is a huge undertaking. The benefit that we have is that Mr. Darling was the lead auditor that had the City of Troy, and one of his clients was the City of Troy, when he worked with the Raymond Group, and we were lucky to bring him in in that regard. Tom's also assisting me essentially with the Downtown Development Authority and the bond issues that we have, and our projections to be underwater essentially in two years. We're working with the DDA on that, and as a matter of fact, there's an executive session with the DDA this coming Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I just wanted to have kind of a general wrap of how much they're taking on, and the focus really is on trying to get the audit complete so we can have that for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Fleming?
Yes, I was going to say this to council comments, but since we're in the discussion, I appreciate that Mr. Zerlag arranged a meeting with myself and Mr. Darling. Called me today, so we sat down about 4:30 today in his office. Very good conversation, accountant to accountant. And basically, what I took away from that meeting, he's got a lot to do, no doubt, and very shorthanded, but the information that I was requesting at the last meeting, we called it transparency, but a better accounting term is full disclosure. That being the payroll and the information, pretty much that Councilwoman Beltramini and Councilman Howelak are talking about, is readily available. It is nothing that has to be created, any good accounting system, and we know we've received awards for our accounting system, and rightfully so, because we have an excellent accounting system, sure. That information on employee wages and benefits and so forth is readily available. I think that from an accounting standpoint, we had an opportunity to review what the Troy School District does on their website, and Mr. Darling's absorbing that and may take a few days to see what's possible there. The bigger issue I see is not an accounting issue, it's more of an IT issue. The information is readily available, things like the check register is readily available, has been for years. Payroll information is readily available, has been for years. It's a matter of whether this council wants to disclose it, and if so, how and why. Those are the questions. Having it available is not an issue. It is there, at your fingertips, available. It's a matter, do we want to disclose it, and do we want to take the time with the IT department to get that on the website? That's the question. It's not whether it's available or not. It is there. Okay? And if Mr. Zerlag wants to comment on that, or Mr. Darling, but that's my takeaway from the meeting today, and I do appreciate your time.
Mayor?
Councilman Slater?
I think it's obvious to everybody here that there's a concerted effort tonight by a group to try and rehash something that we talked about last week, or two weeks ago, and we made a decision two weeks ago what to do, and I'm going to hold firm on that. There's a scheduled study session on the 29th of August. Let's wait for that. Let's talk about it there instead of at the table tonight. Let's move forward. We already talked about this.
Any others on this item?
Mayor?
Councilman Howelak?
I appreciate that. I think the reason why the issue is even brought up this evening is in response to Mr. Eckout, and I think that... I don't think you were here at the last meeting, and so I think even still, it may be uncertain as to where we're going with this, but I think we were just trying to follow up and make sure that there was an adequate response.
Okay, let's go on now to regular business. There's none scheduled for this evening, but we do have the consent agenda items. Does council have any items that they wish to have exempted? I'd like to have J4A exempted, please. Any others?
It doesn't seem to be on the agenda now.
Pardon?
It appears to be, have been removed.
This agenda is removed? Let me see.
Mine just says J4B.
No, it says J4A.
Mine says J4A.
What are you talking about?
What are you talking about?
I see you don't have it, but I do.
I don't have it on mine.
It's on.
Maybe you need to get on the right agenda.
It's on... No, I think it...
On page 25.
No, it's on page 11 on this one.
Okay.
All right. Anyway, all right. Any other items that people want? Councilwoman Fleming, did you want one?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'd like to review J7 and J8.
J7 and J8, okay. Any others that people want exempted? Okay, could we have a resolution to approve all the consent agenda items except for J4A, J7, and J8?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
We resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of items J4A, J7, and J8, which shall be considered after consent agenda items as printed.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Howelak, that we approve all the consent agenda items with this vote, except for J4A, J7, and J8, which will be considered after this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Stewart?
You're showing?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howelak?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Kirwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we'll go to... So if you were here on an item that is a consent agenda item, those have all been approved except for J4A, seven, and eight. So we'll go to those items now. J4A is a resolution authorizing travel authorization and approval to expend funds for council members' travel expenses to the National League of Cities in November. And it occurs the day after our city election, which is November 8th. And my question in bringing it up is that we will have new council members that will come on, and there is training at the Michigan level, at the Michigan Municipal League, for those members. And so I'm wondering if we want to have, since we have limited funds in the expense for this, if we want to be approving this, or if we want to defer those costs to costs that we know will be coming up with MML. So I brought it up for discussion by council members.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Beltramini?
I ask for this to be on the agenda. As you know, I chair a committee for the National League of Cities, and that committee has some specific business to be done about involving residents and collaborating with your citizens at this meeting. And so I would like approval to go. Whether or not I am a sitting council person after the 14th of November, I would, of course, prepare a proper report of what transpired at that meeting for the council and share anything I learned with management and the sitting council.
Any others wish to discuss this item? Then could we have a resolution to approve this item?
Madam Mayor, since I ask for it to be on the agenda, we'll see where it goes. Resolve that council members are authorized to attend the National League of Cities, NLC Congress of Cities, and exposition, November 9th through 12th, 2011, in Phoenix, Arizona, in accordance with the accounting principles of the City of Troy.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltramini, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming. Further discussion of the item?
Mayor?
Councilman Howelak?
Yes, if... Who all is planning to attend this is my first question. Is it...
Madam... Anyone else? I think Councilwoman Beltramini was the only one that had expressed interest.
Okay. And just briefly, what value do you believe will be derived from attending this this year?
Well, there are a couple of things, and you've got the agenda in front of you, so I don't need to go over all of that. But as I say, there will be additional information on how to collaborate with your residents, and I think that that is something that this city can find of value. It also is where the lobbying issues for the National League of Cities are set, and so as we think about where we want our municipal dollars spent from an advocacy standpoint, this is the place to make that decision and have some influence in that, so. And there are always, you know, the networking, the learning you do from the speakers and from the other participants. You've been, so you know that, so. Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protam Kirwin?
One thing that might be considered, I know that... I believe that Councilmember Beltramini has paid some time...
Bell Tramini has paid sometimes for her own transportation to things. I don't know if you had considered that this time. I know that when serving on the Planning Commission and attending a national, I did pay for my own, for everything except the registration. And that might be a good compromise on something like this, at this time. That way, at that time, there were nine who were seeking professional development. This coming year, we will have three or four seeking professional development, and it would be good to stretch those dollars.
Further discussion of the item? The vote, Mrs. Stewart?
Councilmember Bell Tramini?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howelak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling? Next, we have item J-7.
Yes, Mayor.
And I believe it was Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes. I would like, and I spoke to the chief about this already, basically what this resolution is doing is spending an estimated $130,568 for a new Simplex Grinnell system, access control system. It's a lot of money. I'm all in favor, but just so the citizens know, we're spending this much money on the Fire Department, I'd like, if you may, the chief could give an explanation as to what this money's for.
Certainly. Mayor, members of council, in 1999, the Fire Department procured an access control system for our six fire stations. The driving force behind that was, is that we have people that routinely go to fire stations to maintain equipment, to fix things, and until that time, we had to escort them because we had to open the doors with a key. Once we got the access control system in place, we were allowed, it gave us the capability to, for regular service, we could give a key fob, but that key fob would only work under certain conditions, times a day, days a week, things like that, so we could control that access. Or if we had ad hoc service coming in the middle of the night for something, we could literally open a door from our office if somebody were there, et cetera. That system worked pretty well. It had some limitations to it. It is now at the end of life. We bought it in 1999. It's, we've got one station that's down, and we're not repairing it because it needs a whole new panel. One of the issues with it is, is that it was state-of-the-art in 1999, which is not state-of-the-art today. After we did that system, when we built the new criminal justice building, City Hall, we retrofitted City Hall with access control, some of the other city buildings, they standardized on a system that was a little bit more robust, had some more features to it, and so therefore the two systems aren't compatible. We don't have, currently have access control on our storage facility at the DPW Yard, which gets a lot of traffic during the day and even in the evening from firefighters that have to retrieve equipment, things like that. And we really don't have a way to log folks in, to find out when people are accessing those facilities. One of the byproducts of this is, we use it to track our contract maintenance folks, the people that clean the fire stations. We can't tell exactly when they enter or when they leave a fire station, but we can tell when they enter the next fire station. And with some of the previous contractors, we had elapsed times of less than 18 minutes from the time they entered the first fire station to totally clean it, to the time they entered the next fire station to clean it. So that allows us to do some checks and balances, to make sure that we're getting what we pay for, for maintenance and things like that. So basically, the system that we have is at the end of life. If we don't replace it, then we go back to using keys and having to send fire personnel to chaperone visitors and maintenance folks into the fire stations.
Counselwoman Fleming?
Just to follow, excellent explanation, chief. But could you speak to the fact that this is a bid waiver and why we're not going out? It spells it out in here, but just for the public that might be viewing.
Simplex Grinnell and the name of the continuum access system is a proprietary system. So if you want one that matches all the other city buildings in Troy to avoid us having to carry multiple key fobs like I carry now, so that we can have one system that the dispatch center could allow people into the fire stations, things like that, we must go with the same system that the rest of the city facilities have.
Thank you.
Then could we have a resolution?
Yes, Mayor. With that excellent explanation, I'm pleased to move the resolution from J-7 as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Bell Tramini, that we approve the resolution, J-7 for the bid waiver, integrated security management system extension for the Fire Department, access control replacement. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Stewart?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Howelak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell Tramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. J-8 is the fireworks permit for the Troy Family Days Festival. You asked for this one also, Counselwoman Fleming?
Yes, I did, Mayor. Thank you very much. I see in the audience, we have a couple of people who are working very hard on this Troy Family Days Festival, and I understand that it's going really well. And I have no issue with your fireworks permit as listed, but I'm just wondering if you would like to give an update on how that Troy Family Days Festival is going? You have anything to say? I mean, I think it's very exciting to me to see this taking place. You know, in the past, we've done this with city funds. This is done with zero city funds, and hopefully, it's going to make some profit for a nonprofit.
I asked the Kachubskys, when they came in, if they wished to speak under further comment, and they indicated no.
If you don't want to, then that's fine.
If anybody else need an update?
I'll speak.
We do appreciate what you're doing, but we do have some study items and some other things, so thank you.
But it's excellent. Thank you very much. And I will move the resolution, J-8, as printed.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilwoman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Bell Tramini, that we approve the resolution for the fireworks permit for the Troy Family Days Festival. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Stewart?
Councilmember Howelak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell Tramini?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes those in the consent agenda. Next, we'll go to council referrals, council comments. This, I think, would be the opportunity that was mentioned earlier by Counselwoman Fleming to talk about item M6. Mr. Darling gave us a letter. Did you wish to bring this up again? Any information or clarification from him?
Oh, Mayor, I'm fine. I had an excellent meeting today, and I appreciate what you're doing and look forward to the meeting on August 29th. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Zerlag?
I'm wondering, Your Honor, if anyone else on council has any questions on Mr. Darling's financial reporting memo? Because he's here.
Right. I appreciate him coming, and I also appreciate the fact that he has set aside time from his own business to work for us, three days a week. I think his memo is very clear and follows along with what our procedures have been regarding reports. And I too look forward to the 29th for the data there, which will be forthcoming. Did anyone else on council?
Mayor?
Counselman Howelak?
Yes, just one thing is that the charter requires quarterly reporting to the City Council on a prompt and timely basis, and typically, that would be within 30 days after the end of the quarter. And it's nothing fancy. Typically, what John Lamorato has done is given us an investment and account summary and compare that to the budget, and that's what we've had. So if we could just at least have what we've had in the past, I don't think it's anything terribly complicated to produce, but just to at least be in compliance with the charter.
We'll be happy to submit what was submitted in the past. Thank you.
Anyone else on this? Okay, any other council comments? Counselwoman Fleming?
Just a question. The pension actuary report, when is that going to be available? Is that going to be at the same time in November? Or is that something we could get prior to that?
Yeah, the actuary report is going to be, I believe, an agenda item for the September meeting for the Retirement Board. And then, once the Retirement Board takes a look at it, it will then be forwarded to City Council.
Thank you.
But were you going to say something, Tom?
That would probably...
I was just trying to clarify as far as the financial statements, those core listings. I mean, based on my researches, it's not most likely to be seen, there's something else. Based on the cash or investments type thing, I guess I'm not aware of that.
We'll see whatever, we'll find out whatever Mr. Lamorato submitted and emulate that.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselman Howelak?
I'm just going to say, I can give you a call during the week and just make sure that we're on the same page.
Sure.
Any other council comments at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Bell Tramini?
We've talked a lot about, tonight, about the police volunteer program. And I'm tickled about this program. I think it will be good for the community, and it's good for the police department, as we have to cut back and volunteers can never replace, only enhance, the operations of sworn officers. But the chief in his memo said something that I think applies to, as we decide what services to keep within the city, as we have to react to the loss in property value. He said it was more important to do fewer things well than to try and do everything poorly. And I think that's where we are as a city, not just with the department. And the other thing I wanted to say is different. We have had our Citizens Academy for some years, and the National League of Cities has webinar resources on informing and collaborating with your citizens, and this fall, we'll be publishing a toolkit. And kudos need to go to Cindy Stewart and what used to be her staff as well, but particularly to her because it is our Citizens Academy from Troy that will be featured in that toolkit this fall, even though there are many over the nation. So I'm pleased about that, and I had nothing to do with it. So we're just that well-known.
That's great. I appreciate you bringing up the police department volunteer program and also emphasizing the fact that volunteers are fine, but they don't replace sworn officers with many of the duties that occur. And I think that it's important for people to realize that we still must follow the law with having the police officers do the duties that they are sworn due. The volunteers simply are a supplement to assist with some things, just like in some subdivisions where they have a citizens patrol group where they drive around with the things on the side of their car, magnets to say that they're, because we've done it in Glenmore, just to make sure that, you know, no one's trying to break in, that kind of thing, or if they see a garage door open. But they don't actually get out of their vehicle and, you know, try to prevent something. I think it's important that we have volunteers for certain kinds of things, but I think it's imperative that we have the right amount of staff, whether it be in the police department, the fire department, and city staff, wherever, to do certain jobs. And I don't think that people should think that we can replace people, even when we've cut back. The other thing is, coming up, there'll be a recognition for the Fire Department in September, where they're going to receive their awards for things that they have done. I think it's beneficial for folks to know that even though we have a volunteer fire department, that they are so highly trained and capable, and their equipment is so good, that they train even paid departments. And so there's different levels of volunteering within this community that are available. But I applaud those citizens who have taken advantage of being in either the Citizens Academy, the citizens, the police, the citizens volunteer program, or any of our others, because it does make our community special. Any other council comments? Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Well, it's kind of bittersweet that Councilmember Bell Tramini mentions the Citizens Academy because we haven't been holding it. And again, that was one of the budgets that went off. But I certainly enjoyed being a member of that, and I think every class that has come before us has talked about the importance. One plus that comes out of the Citizens Academy is many people then volunteer for the city, and it does highlight some of the things that one can do, able-bodied or not, to help out in the programs. I wanted to share, if I may, a phone call that I received this afternoon from one of our residents, and just ask our council members to think about whether this would be a policy issue, or an ordinance issue, or a policing issue. But this resident, who's one of our seniors, has a concern regarding those who drop leaflets at homes. And I know that we've seen it in the police reports, that sometimes, and this is her concern, that sometimes those who are leaving those leaflets are also kind of scouting houses. And sure enough, there came a time when she and her husband were going to go to Florida and had pulled out the car out of the garage, were packing up the car to take to Florida, including a TV. And one of these, happened to be a coupon that was being attached to the house, went by, and sure enough, within minutes, that TV was gone. She praised the police department, came out right away, brought out the dogs. Everything about the police department was fabulous, and she wanted to say that. Nevertheless, the TV was gone. And her concern, and I think if you read the Troy Somerset Gazette and Cindy Comets, you know, warnings to everyone every week, is this something that we might think about, staff might think about, what kind of concerted effort? It's wonderful to see in N2 that some of the citizen patrols are there, but this seems to be an incident that's recurring. And although I know our police department has been very good at finding out and following up when citizens give calls, what can we do to be proactive in a case like this? Knowing that there are more and more desperate people, and knowing that we have fewer and fewer people serving in our police force. So I just wanted us all to kind of think about that, and maybe we can couple some answers to address this.
Madam Mayor.
Counselwoman Bell Tramini?
If I could respond to that in a short kind of way, maybe a year ago, Officer Feld did a two or three-minute segment with one of the news organizations that talked about how you load your car for summer vacation and those sorts of things, and how you left your house when you were leaving for a period of time, and what to do in those kinds of instances to keep this sort of thing from happening. I wonder if we could contact, it was NBC, the local NBC affiliate, and see if we could get that two-minute segment to run on our website? If they would let us do that, if they still have it, or if the police department would make a similar one to run? Just in a short, and I think there are more things that we can think about doing, but just to kind of knock that...
Madam Mayor.
There was a connection that we used to have with COFA, which was great, because that was everybody from all the communities, and we always had an officer or captain presence there with an update on what they're seeing there. But the concern is that we've made enough checks off our list of services, that this is an indication that we might want to think of a way, either through public policy or through other resources, to address this issue, which seems to be coming up more and more often. So thank you for your time.
Any other council comments at this time?
Your Honor.
Mr. Zerlag?
I'll talk last, only being the city manager, but if I am last, I'd like to mention that you have a letter from the subject of study items. We're talking tonight on boards and committees, next week on the E-RIP concessions. There were some other topics that have come up during the course of a previous timeframe, snow plowing protocols, street conditions, and the ICMA recommendation to retain four snowplowing protocols, street conditions, and the ICMA recommendation to retain four of the 38 sworn positions slated for elimination. Would you want me to put those on future agendas soon, September, October?
Yes. September and October, yes.
And is there anything else? Did I miss something here?
I think this is an accumulation of the things that we've talked about over the past few months. And then tonight, we'll have a chance to do, talk about boards and committees again at the study session, but we'll take a break before we go in there. And then, when I begin that part, I have a comment about the agenda where we thought it was going to be on. Okay, so we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll continue in the other room with the study item on boards and committees.